...pled allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Sherry, would you call the roll, please?
Thompson.
Present.
Patton.
Present.
Lawson.
Yes. Item four on our agenda this morning is the approval of the agenda. Entertain motions on this item, please.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion or comments? There being none, roll call vote, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes. Motion carries. Item five on our agenda this morning is the consent agenda. Entertain motions on the consent agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve following items on the consent agenda.
A second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any questions or comments? There being none, roll call vote, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Okay. The consent agenda is to approve the minutes of our regular meeting on November 9th, 2021, and canvas meetings of November 9th, 2021, and November 16th, 2021, and October 2021 claims listings. We approve the claims as audited and authorize auditor and recorder to issue payment of the same. The listing of claims paid at this meeting and all claims paid in the current month will be published as part of the first meeting of the following month. File clerk of district court report, October 21st, October 2021, general supplemental surcharge of 36529. File audit report with the Solid Waste Management Commission of Marshall County for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, and place on file. File city school election certificate, certification and post-election audit held November 5th, 2021, and file manure management plan. Applegate GL Incorporated, 59073, 2845 Garwin Road, Marshalltown, annual update with no changes made. Item six on our agenda this morning is to adopt resolution number 2021-0039, adopting a fee schedule for plats of survey, retracement plats and subdivision plats. Do we have Todd with us this morning to make any comments on this?
Todd is there. Push your button, Todd.
Todd, you're muted.
All right, sorry.
There we go.
Yeah, I hit unmute, but it didn't do it right away. Basically, this is, Kevin Blood had to buy, basically trade 60 feet of one parcel to another so he could fit his building in with the setback requirements, and he had been too many splits already, so they had to take him from the zoning commission to get a variance on it.
And did the zoning commission approve it?
Yes, they did unanimously.
Okay.
Todd, can I stop you for a minute? And we're actually on number six, which is the new fee schedule.
Sorry, I was trying to dial in. I don't have the right password for it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no questions on the fee schedule, I'm sorry.
I'll entertain motions on resolution number 2021-0039, adopting the ski fee schedule resolution.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion then to adopt resolution 2021-0039, adopting fee schedule for plats of survey, retracement plats and subdivision plats.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve, to adopt resolution number 2021-0039 for the fee schedule.
I want to just add, this kind of came out weird. The top of the next page is the inside the city limits. So you see on the next, it just kind of got cut off weird. So the first little part of the chart is outside city limits, and then the top of the next page is inside. The main change on this is the engineer fees is because the, inside the city of Marshall Town, we're adding some services where our engineer, where Mark is reviewing everything. So it was a change that was requested of having his review as well. So that's really the change on all of this. But I just noticed it printed out kind of weird, and I was confused, so I thought everyone else could be as well.
So is five, six and seven part of the inside the city limits then, or is it just like it shows here?
It's like it is, but on the chart, see how it says inside city limits at the bottom?
Yep.
That's for what is on the top of the next page.
Okay. And I'm working off the back of the next page up here.
Yeah.
Our motion includes both.
Yes, it includes all these, all the fees there.
Outside city limits and inside city limits.
Mm-hmm.
And it's basically the same as what it's been.
It's basically the same as what it's been, except for the engineering fee is what, I believe, the only thing that Whitney Hunt worked with city and with the engineer's office to make this change.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion or questions? We have a motion, we have a motion and a second to approve. There being no further discussion, questions or comments, roll call vote, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes. Motion carries. Item number seven on our agenda this morning is to approve the 2080 agreement with the Marshall County Communications Commission. Bill, this is kind of your wheelhouse, would you bring us up to speed, please?
We have spent about a year and a half redoing and bringing up to date and digging the misunderstandings and things out of the original 2080. And what we're asking today is that you would approve the 2080 as we're asking it to be amended. Supervisors, I gave you some time ago, any questions on any of the things that you saw? It allows, it allows the organization that was created years ago, being the commission, to actually be responsible for it. And also, when you have responsibility, then it's your deal, you're responsible for that. It gives the person who is going, who is and who will be in the future director of this, the actual ability to do that. And I think this has been a good thing. We have spent a lot of time, we had a, we had a committee of five work on this numerous times, we took it before the commission. And the commission is made up of mayors of the county, plus the sheriff, plus the county supervisor representative, which is me, and then also EMS. They're the voters.
And emergency management, not EMS, sorry.
I'm sorry. And that was Kim. So when we voted, the vote came out eight to three. There were two proxies and then one mayor not agreeing, but I think that's pretty good. And I think this is a good, a good way of moving forward. I think it shows newness in this and workability. And Rhonda, you're in on this too. Anything else that you would like to add? Because we spent a lot of time on this thing.
It was. The largest portions of it, and we went back to the drawing board, I believe what you see in front of you is the sixth edition, correct?
Yes.
It's still the sixth, okay. And we went back and, you know, some relatives were concerned about certain language, so we modified that, we fixed that. It cleared everything up from, okay, this is what it should be, to, okay, this is where we're at now. Plus, it also, you know, cleared up responsibilities as far as even in my position. So I think moving forward, it's a good direction, and I'm, you know, very happy with it, so.
Well, when you're hired as a director, you were hired with the ability and the power to hire and fire. You have the responsibility of doing that. And this allows you to do that. And I think it's a good way to run a business. And if there are any other people who may disagree down the road and say, Rhonda, this situation isn't working on a deal, they can come forward. They have the bill out, there is a TAC committee that is there, who can listen to these things or bring these things forward to us. And the sheriff is there to also visit with them. I think we're well organized in that regard.
Well, it ties in to exactly under the premise that I was hired under. I was hired under the premise of, as the director, it is my responsibility to ensure that there are policies and procedures. Liability is, you know, at the forethought. And looking at all of those things and doing those things as I have done, it ties all of those things in together to not have, in the wording of the current 2080, the wording was separate under the premise of what I was hired for. So it very much clears it up and allows me to continue down that path. There has been, even for the previous TOB to what it is TAC now, there have been no meetings from pretty much the time that I got hired. There's been no real reason for them to be involved in that. When there has been any kind of an issue, there was an issue with assistant of the fire department had actually requested put in place and so on and so forth. So how I even got involved in that was we worked together as a team. We figured out what the problem was, and as the three entities, we worked as a team because that system was, you know, causing a conflict in file and report issues for the SO. And when you're looking at dispatch, dispatch is, which we have to be able to work together with all of our entities, not just one or another. So being able to work together in that premise, anytime that there's been an issue, we work it out. If there's been a problem, it's discussed. I mean, I don't, there's never been an issue with that. And then if there's no resolution to that, then there's the commission.
Yeah.
And the commission can make a residing vote as to, okay, what path do we want to go down? And we can revisit it there. It's like any other profession or business or entity.
And all the bills are gone through, at a meeting. The commission votes on this.
Yeah.
And so there's, there's nothing hidden. And Sheriff Phillips, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Yeah, and I think the kind of, build off of Rhonda's statements of the TAC and how it is, it's a resource, you know? We think of the communications center as a support agency or support entity. It also does the reverse, we also support that communications center in public safety and fire and ENS, that we like to think that everything is moving forward, so we've done in law enforcement, fire, ENS, things change quite a bit. And we have to be able to pull those resources together and make those changes and those adjustments. And I think, and I said it before in other meetings, that communication between the entities is going to be key to address those issues as they come down, lessen those impacts, but they do become greater. I think it's a good, it's a good organization. I think it's, the transparency through government is well received, we know what the bills are, where the money's going, who's involved, and then very active commission, elected officials really taking active part in those meetings.
Good. Anything else? Okay.
If not, I would, I would move to approve the new 2080 agreement of the Marshall County Communications Commission.
I'll second. Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the 2080 agreement between Marshall County Communication System. Any further comments or discussion? There being none, roll call vote, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. Item number eight on our agenda this morning is file receipt of Marshall County zoning variance number 2021-VAR6009, KH Land LLC to allow filing of a plat survey in lieu of a subdivision plat as required by the ordinance. Todd, now we're on number eight, you want to bring us up on this one, please?
All right, back to where we were. Kevin Blood is building a new, I believe it's for young cab, cab building. And to get it to fit, he needed 60 extra feet to fit our setback requirements. So basically, what he did, wants to do is take 60 feet of his other parcel and transfer it to this parcel, so he can get everything to fit. His land's been split too many times, he would have needed a subdivision instead, so he asked for a variance for the subdivision, and the zoning commission passed it unanimously.
Entertain motions on this item, please.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion then to approve Marshall County zoning variance number 2021-VAR6009, KH Land LLC to allow filing a plat of survey in lieu of a subdivision plat as required by ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further questions or comments? There being none, roll call vote, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes. Motion carries. Item number nine on our agenda this morning is a personnel change. This is to authorize the change of employment status for Austin Ewol, moving from mechanic three to mechanic four. Pay rate of change from 2768 to 2801, effective November 27th, 2021. Paul, you got any comments you want to make on this one?
This, this is a change that, part of what we're going through right now is we have, we're looking for a mechanic, but we are a little short on mechanics at the shop right now, and we would like to get to where we have three, you know, full-time mechanics. And the, the, Austin, over this shortage has really helped us out as far as keeping things going. There's a lot of situations where we have to bring truck drivers in to help mechanics because we just don't have the wrenches in the shop to work on something. And this change from three, from mechanic three to mechanic four just basically makes Austin the working form in our mechanics shop.
Entertain motions on this item, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to, I would move to approve the status for Austin Ewol moving from mechanic three to mechanic four. Pay rate change from 2768 to 2801, effective November 27th, 2021.
A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this employment change. Any further comments or questions? There being none, roll call vote, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes. Motion carries. We've got some tabled items from previous meetings. The first one is, we're going to cover a little bit later on in closed session, so that would be 10A. 10B is a prod, we're going to leave tabled also, just give you a small update on that. There is work being done on, on the drug court in both the senate and in the house.
This is state of Iowa.
State of Iowa, senate and house. We've spoken with both the senate and the house leadership. It appears that the snag last year came because there were some confusion in appropriations. It's not just coming out of the, the house chair of that subcommittee for judicial, but it goes to appropriations, and it looks like they may have some changes on that. Spoke with both Senator Adler and Representative Fisher in the house on this, and they're both working on this on both sides of the aisle, so we're going to take a wait and see on how the legislature comes out on that. Which leads us to item 10C, which was tabled for opioid effects for discussion only. We've got a representative from the attorney's office here this morning, do you have any information on that?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any information.
Okay.
But I was here when Jordan talked to you, and I don't, I'm not aware of anything having changed.
We left that, we're going to leave that tabled until Jordan, at that time, comes back with some further information, and I know he's working with the state attorney general's office on that. We are going to participate, and it's just what funding and what means is going to go on there, so we'll leave table, 10C also tabled. Moving on to item number 11, road improvement request, this is for discussion only, on Abbott Avenue north of 160th Street to Chapel Hill Church, and also East Main Street Road east of Zeller Avenue. Do we have our individuals that want to speak to this on Zoom with us this morning? I can see Brandon in there.
Yes, we're here, we're the ones interested in the one-mile section of E35.
Okay. From Zeller to Abbott.
Abbott, correct.
Okay. You've got the floor, go ahead.
Okay. I'm going to share my screen with you all, and I have a little slide we put together here, so give me a moment to, to share things.
Brandon, what is your last name?
Swartz.
Thank you.
Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so the section we're talking about here is this, this roughly one-mile section, just, as you know, east of town, right where Zeller hits and extending east on to the county line road right here. I'm going to try to minimize this screen here. Okay, so right here is, is the section here, and this is a map from 2013, from the United States Department of Transportation, which has this section, you know, designated as the farm-to-market road here within the county. This was just a list of preliminary people who were coming to attend today. We could, we could all go through our, call that later here, but the, the history of this started in the 60s, when the county just asked area residents here and landowners, and brought it to them to get their consent to extend the easements all the way throughout the, the whole mile stretch there, with, you know, good faith efforts that, that would then subsequently be paid. And the landowners, knowing all the, the benefits and, 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 you know, exposure to it, decided to go on, you know, consent with that, knowing that they would have an increase or a decrease of their use of the land and property valuations and so forth. So not paving the road back then and just expanding, essentially made it a high-speed gravel road. And so it, it's, in, since that time, it's, the daily traffic volume has, has increased tremendously. There's vehicles speeding down, up and down the road, there are no lanes where, you know, even traffic can be, you know, you know, designated to, and so it's, it's just, it creates a lot of hazard, safety-wise, as well as dust and pollution. The county maintenance is out there constantly, so I'd be curious as to what the costs are annually to maintain the roads. As you can see here, this shows on both sides, on the north and south side of the roads, the extent of that easement and what it did with expanding into the landowners there. It was quite significant. There's another photo there. Here's the before and after, and another big, significant thing that happened is this T-intersection right here on Abbott, it essentially was a stop where you had to veer to the right and then another right again to continue on into Tama County. Well, after the improvement, it eliminated that T, so there was no need for traffics, traffic to slow down, it was just able to continue on through. And here's an aerial of how it looks today, a couple, I guess this was about a year ago, Google Maps, but as you can see, the, the road has been, you know, widened almost as much or more even as Main Street heading west into the Marshalltown. And so it's just, it's become a continuous, high-speed roadway all the way through here. Here's another, here's a closer image here, and when we talk about safety too, I personally know firsthand, and I encourage you guys all to, if you're ever in the neighborhood, right, you know, here, to, to pull over and take a look, there's a memorial right here where my great-grandfather was killed and hit by a, coincidentally, a gravel truck many years ago. And it affected my family greatly. My, my grandfather was 11, and he had to stay with his dead grandfather, or his dead father, while the family went to town. And so it is, it's not only, you know, a safety concern, it's, we know that, you know, that accidents do occur here. Now this, you can't see much, this was a large map that I, I had to zoom out on, but we'll get to the details here in the next slide. This is from a traffic study published in 2017 of all the Marshall County roads, and you could see all the highlight areas in red that I've done, where I've indicated that these are paved sections of roads in the county. Here's a closer view of this. Now this shows the daily traffic averages on each one of these roads. So right here, you could see on Main Street, as, as we pass Zeller, it's 230 vehicles per day. And keep in mind, these aren't just normal vehicles, a lot of the volume are large trucks carrying, you know, heavy, heavy loads. Now, 230, as a comparison, if you look down here, south of us, there's, there's a one-mile section here that is paved, and it has 10 less traffic counts per day. And if you look throughout the rest of the map, you'll, you'll notice too, some areas that I, that I've selected, you know, a lot larger distances and a lot shorter. Here's one with a count of 10 traffic vehicles per day, and it looks like it's about a quarter mile that's, that is paved. Now, this is the same map. Here's Marshalltown. Here's Marshalltown and extending west here from, here's the 330, right from about Lincoln Way, all the way west to where the gravel starts here. This whole two-mile section is paved and it has 190 was their count, which is 40 vehicles less per day than, than ours. And it's not just the distances, as you can see here, this whole section, this stretch here has the same vehicle count as ours and it's, it's paved in its entirety. Here's one up here that's 190 and then drops down to 160 and that's all paved in and out of St. Anthony there. The takeaway from that is that our 230 vehicles per day that, that travel this road compared to other sources that are published by the Engineers Association for the Iowa counties, Marshall County as a whole had an average of 182 vehicles per day. Our section is 239, that's 79% higher number of vehicles than the county's average. Another very interesting fact to take away from this is that 33.8 miles of paved roads, Marshall County, that have less daily traffic averages are paved. And that to me is one of the most significant and impactful takeaways from this. It's the heaviest traveled farm-to-market road in all of Marshall County. And I've also, I sent to the board in advance to a, a study that I found from the DOT from 2009, which listed the East Main Street E35 segment from the eastern borders of Marshalltown to Zeller Avenue. It's within the Iowa's, it's in the top 5% of the, the most serious crashes in, in the state and so why they didn't extend it, the study in our section, well, you know, because it's not paved, but the danger just doesn't stop there at the corner where, you know, where my great-grandfather was killed. It's a direct continuation, you know, that, that only continues to increase because of the quarry in Tama County that, that you see a large volume of trucks going to. So there's, there's another, you know, just, I'd like to point out the, some of the impacts of the gravel, constantly under maintenance and repair and, and we have some other neighbors here that have joined today with the same concerns, some that live in and reside in Tama County that travel to Marshalltown and, you know, daily, who have worked in Marshalltown on businesses in Marshalltown and so forth. And so it's just not a, it's not, it's just not exactly just Marshall County, it, it extends into Tama and, and other counties. It's, it increases, it has to increase insurance rates as well as, and I would, I would think property and medical liabilities and risks. And also, you know, the, the Tama County residents who do travel this road and work in Marshalltown, it, it affects the businesses in Marshalltown, you know, snow delays equals less workforce in production and less local sales taxes that, you know, that the county and city are collecting. We think that a paved road is, is going to help the county economically by increasing our property taxes, which then, you know, subsequently will increase tax revenues and it'll enhance more farming and more farm-to-market accessibility to and from Marshalltown into, you know, Tama County and impacting the whole area. As you can see, there's, you know, the, the big risks of safety, it's just, it's unbelievable the amount of, of dust and volume of traffic and, and it really is hazardous, which you'll see here in, in the next slide.
Paul, was there a particular project going on that they had so many vehicles going back and forth in this short period?
On this stretch because of the power plant and when they, when they took out the Sutherland Station, they were actually helping constantly on that during that project.
And that's gone?
Power plant and the, and the removal of the Sutherland Station probably would, would both contributed.
And both those projects are completed?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, was there, was someone saying something here? Okay, I'm sorry, I thought I heard some, some, some questions being asked. Was that directed to, to me or someone else?
Directed to the county engineer, why there was so much traffic and it was because of the Sutherland Station build and demolition project that was going on?
During what time period?
That's been, what, two years ago?
Okay, well that, this, so the, the traffic study, you know, differs from, from that. It's a, you know, that, that study was from 2017 and this video was just during a six-minute span timeframe between 7:55 and 8:01 last May and, and so it, I don't think it was, it's not limited to just one specific project. This, this has been a going concern for quite some time.
What is the speed limit on the road?
Well, there, there's no posted speed limit, which is, you know, so, so that's another...
I don't believe they post speed limits on the county gravels.
Right. So I appreciate you guys, you know, taking a look at, at our, our slide here and listening to my concerns and as you can see that we have some other area residents here that share the same concerns and, and I guess, you know, the, what we're asking is just to understand a little bit about the, you know, the specifics to priority and, and if there's any, what criteria goes into play to allocate, you know, money for these improvements and, and how do you rank them and where do we, is, is our, our biggest concerns and, and questions that, that we have at this point. And then I guess, so I'd like to open it up to anyone else here that has, would like to say a few things, but, but those are the two questions at least that I, I, I have specifically as a problem.
Is this in the five-year plan right now?
Not currently, no.
Nice. Go ahead.
There are farm equipment, large farm...
Is this place?
Not at all, you have to pull over. This is limited.
I can't hear.
Okay, one, one moment here.
You're breaking up really bad.
Sorry. In the wintertime, the road becomes impassable, it's full of ruts and the gravel road is slimy. People tend to go into the ditches. There's a steep, steep ditch all the way around along that road and at the intersection of Abbott and E35, often people end up in this 30-foot ditch. At the intersection of E35 and Zeller, I personally know several people that have almost been killed because people don't stop at the stop sign and continue on, on the paved road. So it's, it's a dangerous road. We have school buses that travel that road also, so it needs attention.
Dorian?
Okay, you got it. Any other comments?
My name is James Mull, I live on Abbott Avenue and...
Just say that again, James.
James Mull, M-U-L-L.
Thank you.
I live on Abbott Avenue, so I travel the road, my wife and I travel the road daily and just I've been in contact with Steve Solosik some about the conditions, how our road becomes just a big mess to where you need, in the range, you spend $10 a vehicle to wash your car. So many times I will, instead of going on Main Street Road, I'll go a mile north out of my way to find a better gravel road to come back to Zeller Avenue and continue my way to work on Main Street Road, so is this a road that needs...
We lost you, James.
I guess I don't know where you lost me, but I said in recent wet, wet times, I will go a mile north out of my way to avoid this section of road, just to have a better road to travel on, so the road needs some attention and I, I would hope that you guys would help us with this project and make it better for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I can speak to this if you want for a little while.
Okay.
This is, this is Roger Chase.
Okay.
I've used my radar gun numerous times, sitting out in my driveway in a lawn chair and it does slow people down when they try to figure out what in the world I'm doing, but until they figure it out, I'm not, not keeping any records, but it's not uncommon for people to go past my house at 60 to 65 miles an hour and it doesn't matter whether it's day or night. So if nothing else, we need some kind of assistance out here for controlling the speed of gravel road. I watched trucks come off of the end of the blacktop onto the gravel and they're mostly the gravel semis. You ought to watch a frame torque and the axles bounce when you're sitting on a lawn tractor and that thing is way larger than you. Oftentimes I'll just get off and walk toward the house, so I'm out of the yard, but it goes in the ditch. So we've got a control here that really does need to be addressed. The blacktop might really help any, but it'd certainly be a lot safer. And safety, I think, is probably our biggest concern out in this neighborhood.
Any other comments?
I'm Pam Wilson and I live like, well, I travel a road anywhere from two to four times a day. I mean, I'm on East Main Street Road. My husband has been hit, their T-bone bad front ditch and I also have had many vehicle issues, cracked rims that cost me $200 from the potholes and tires that have been, I've been stuck in the mud and especially down where you hit Abbott in that area, it's really bad, it's like a mudslide area, but you have to dodge potholes, you have to dodge, chomp to the road, you have to, and then when they put the, I call it sand, you, when somebody wants to pass you, you can't, or then they get in front of you, you can't see anything and deers are an issue too, so you, you gotta creep, you just gotta go really slow. I never speed through that area at all. I just take my time, that's my kind of slowdown area, but yeah, there's, I, I can't tell you how many accidents, I've almost been killed a few times because people won't slow down or have, most of the time, even semis won't stop at Zeller, they'll just keep going and I've swerved away from semis and I've almost been hit, but I'm very defensive driver now, so, but it would help tremendously with the width of the road for them to put a blacktop. I mean, it would slow things down, I think, and make people, people think a little bit more and save a lot, like Roger said and Brandon said about the maintainer coming out, because half the time when the maintainer comes out, he throws all the stuff in the middle of the road and then we have flat tires. So I pay a lot, I'd like to put more food on my table instead of money in my vehicle because of roads, you know, and I get tired of people saying, well, that's what you get when you live in the country. I'm like, I pay taxes too, all these people pay taxes and we should have something we can rely on and I've been told when our road is bad, I live on 270th Street, well, just stay home. Well, okay, I'll lose a day of pay, you know, because of muddy roads, gravel or we need, basically in this section, we need a blacktop. Thank you for listening.
Ms. Wilson, what's your first name?
Cam.
Who's told you to stay home?
The secretary, I called the, it wasn't from, it wasn't Marshall County, it was Tama. I'm, I'm just off of Tama County and the secretary at the road maintaining place in, in Tama, because I called her because I had, I live right by the Carlton Brother and Church, shout out, anyway, and I had a bunch of cakes up in there and I needed to get up the hill and I got stuck and I had to, I was about burning up my transmission, I had to go back and forth to keep getting out of the ruts and it's not that big of a hill, but there's no gravel. So I was about in tears because I almost went over the culvert and went backwards into the ditch. So I finally got out of that mess and got home and I pulled in and I called them, I said, "You guys have got to get some gravel on this road." I said, "We pay our taxes, there's no gravel, I just got stuck, I can't hardly get out either way." I said, "The road is so bad," and she said, "Well, just stay home then." That's what she said.
Okay, but just to be clear, that was Tama County that told you that?
Yes. Yeah. But I work in Marshall County, well, I work all over and you can see on all the roads, even in Marshalltown, that there's favorite areas where the gravel's at, you know what I mean? Like over by the racetrack in Tama County, there's a whole bunch of gravel, you know, and I'm not going to say names, but certain houses over there, there's a lot of gravel, even by the quarry, there's a lot of gravel, but then you come around other places and there's no, nothing, you know? So I've had people come out to my house and say, "Good luck with your road and East Main Street," you know, and I'm like, "Yeah, I'm," you know, so, and like, like Mr. Mull, yeah, Mr. Mull said, "I spend..." So, and like, like Mr. Mull, yeah, Mr. Mull said, I spend probably thirteen to eighteen dollars on my car to wash it. Because Rainbow Car Wash will not, if you got a lot of mud and stuff, they won't wash your car. So I have to go wash it first, go back over to Rainbow and then they'll clean it. So. And Rainbow Car Wash isn't cheap if you're automatic, if you drive to there. Anyway, yeah.
Okay. I'd like to hear from our county engineer on this. So if you guys could hold on for a couple.
One more comment, Dave. The road is nice and wide, but you have come out here and there are three tracks down the middle of the road. Nobody drives to the edge because it's not safe. So I think pavement would at least define the road as opposed to what we have now. I dust control from edge to edge only because I want to control anybody's dust that's out there. We could about drive down the middle of that road and there'll be three tracks anytime of any kind of weather, winter, summer, whatever.
And, and just to add one, one thing to that is the safety issue with that, if it were paved. At least we would have our markings as to, you know, the designated lanes. But when, when it's not paved, as Roger alluded to, everyone travels right directly down the middle. And so the, the slopes and the grades of the road itself isn't made for a high-speed gravel road. It's made for lanes because if you, there's, there's absolutely no visibility. When you have someone coming up the hill and coming on the other side of the hill, there, there's absolutely none. And, and so paving the road with adding the markings, I think would, would be, you know, a very wise decision.
And early on, when we started talking about this several years ago. Paul admitted that the road was graded like it was because it was graded for pavement. Cause I was mentioning the water all runs right down the middle of the road and it doesn't ever get to the ditch. And it's so obvious, we can have just a little bit of rain and the middle of the road, other than where we dust control it is. Built up and that at least repels some water, but the rest of the road is just terrible. And down at the bottom of the hill where the double box culvert is, a half an inch of rain, you got a mud hole. Between the blacktop and where our dust control starts, you got a quagmire. And it's just, I don't know, it's just, it needs, something needs to be done with the road. Cause it's dangerous when the water and the, running down the middle of the road or down the edges. I've got pictures and I think I've sent them before to Paul, but of washing on the south side of the road. Right across from my mailbox, we've, I've got pictures of it. It's sixty inches deep, if not more so. And it just washes all the way down to the next driveway, which allowed when the Brandon's house. So there needs to be something. I don't know if there's something cheaper than pavement that would save you guys any money. And you could still do your farm-to-market road somewhere else instead of our mile. But something needs to be done because it's just not good. Fortunately, the summer turned off dry, so it wasn't like the standard year. But the spring was just terrible. So anyway, that's all I got.
Hey. I'd like to hear from our county engineer, Paul, on some of these issues and, and also after that. Maybe the sheriff could speak to the traffic enforcement.
Can, can you guys hear me okay on that end, out there, sniper land?
You may have to get closer.
You might have to move up.
We can switch. Come on up.
Real.
Where'd you knock yourself off?
Okay. Thanks for the, for the presentation. You didn't have to talk for twenty minutes to get me to want to pave the road. Because I, it's on my list of, of short sections that are, that are viable to be paving projects. Two hundred and thirty vehicles a day. It is one of the highest traveled rock roads in the county, probably the highest. It's not the highest traveled FM road in the county as, you know. About a hundred miles of our FM system are paved and those mostly will have higher traffic than two thirty. The, but two thirty is right in that range where I'm considering. Two fifty is my, is my number that I look for where it is cheaper to pave this road than it is to rock it and rock it and, and keep it maintained. And so we are right on the area of where this thing, aside from all the other benefits that, that the residents are saying it's. Just economically, it costs as much to keep this road in rock as it does to keep it in pavement.
Paul, can I, can I ask one thing? So the, the two thirty number was from the study from twenty seventeen. And I wasn't able to find anything more recent, but I, I would bet that there's, there's a more recent study. And that the volume is significantly higher than the two thirty that it was, you know, even four years ago.
It is the most recent data. They do every, every five years they come back to us. So we, we'll likely see some more counts next, next summer. But at that, at that traffic level, it, it's a viable project. And because it's on FM, it also opens up our, our funding options on it. The, the concern about speed and three-track is everywhere in the county. Okay? If I would, I would just estimate right now and you might be able, Joel might be able to. There's two or three hundred miles of rock in the county where they routinely see sixty to sixty-five mile an hour vehicles. Because they're smooth, if they're properly maintained, they go that fast. And, and there aren't the personnel to enforce that speed in, in the, in the county. The three-tracking happens on any properly graded road in the county. When we get really concerned is when they start two-tracking because that means that there's only one traveled way. That they're, that they're using that you just see, but as far as sharing that middle track, every rock road in the county that's properly graded will, will track that way. So that, that, anyway, not really a, a safety issue. It's just the way people drive rock roads. But the, um, I did speak with Lyle, Lyle Bream, the, the Tama County engineer, and they have no. Intention or plans to improve their section of the road. But that still doesn't change the economic factors of us. If we make an improvement, we'll, we'll save money on rock and, and maintenance and it will be a, a safer, a safer roadway. The.
Paul, can I ask one question? Do, do you have numbers that you can provide us of the annual maintenance costs? That's allocated for our section here that we're speaking of?
I, it would take, it would take, I would have to do the GPS tracing of the, of the motorator to see how often it came through and, and bladed it. Tons of rock would be an estimate, but I'm guessing it gets more than, more tons than the average mile of Marshall County roadway. There's, you know, I've, I've had roads and granted it was in Jasper County, but we had a road down there. We had to rock every, every two or three weeks. And there's, there's no way that, and that's currently it's paved, but there's, there's a point where you just have to keep feeding this road rock. And it just keeps eating it and throwing it off. And you guys are aware of the throw off, I'm sure as well. But. The, the numbers, I, I'm estimating that it would be paved with eight inches of asphalt and it's. Roger, when I said it's ready to be paved, I, I said, that's a pavable base. That, that road right there is graded to the place where it could be paved on with very little earthwork. And so that makes it a little bit more reasonable cost to, to do it. And, but based on our last bid numbers of this, this summer. I'm guessing right now that this mile to, to put eight inches of asphalt would be somewhere between six and seven hundred thousand dollars. And that's, that's just, uh, just based on our, our last prices. The market moves, oil prices vary, but that's, that's where I'm at today on it. It would be a project that would go in with a couple other short stretches of, of resurfacing that we need to do. And one of them, they spoke to the Road de Montour, that one, that single mile there does need resurfacing quite badly. And then the one-mile road that's south of Gilman also is going to be needing resurface. So there's potentially three one-mile, what I like to call lonely miles. And, and they could make a project that would be of a decent size to make the cost hopefully a little more beneficial. So along those same lines with the, with the paving, we currently are using all of our FM money and all of our money that we allocate toward paving. Just to keep the paving that we have. And so I have to be really careful about paving extra unpaved miles because I have to still be able to come back in twenty and twenty-five years. And, and resurface it and keep it to where it's in a, a usable condition. So that's. That's why we don't just go out and pave every time we get enough money to go pave it, because we still have to take care of the stuff that we, that we already have. Board have any questions or? The, the farm-to-market system we established with the DOT and, and we, there's a, a limit of how many miles we can call farm-to-market. But it's just, uh, we have a, they, they try to make sure that each county has about the same miles of farm-to-market because funding was tied to that, you know, way back when. Anything else?
Okay. Any other comments or questions here for further discussion? We don't have this for.
Thank everyone on board for listening to our concerns and, and, you know, considering our, our concerns and, and for. You know, any proposed actions are, would be grateful. So thank you for the time today.
I got, I got one more thing I'd like to cover on this. You guys repeatedly made comments on, on speed. And I'd like to hear from Sheriff Phillips on, on any of that. And maybe there's something that he can have his patrol deputies handle in a different fashion on this and give it some more attention. Sheriff?
Yes. Can everyone hear me okay without yelling a lot? Roger, can you hear me?
Yep.
A couple of things that, that I want to comment on is we talk about a high-speed gravel. We have been finding in our rural areas that are paved, the better the road, the higher the speeds are. So I'd be a little concerned about, um, that speed increases if that area was, was paved. You mentioned the study in two thousand nine as one of the deadliest roads or crash roads. That was, that study was taken into account. We did get a grant, I believe it was two thousand seventeen. Where we had made road improvements along with signage, roadway markers. And then we actually had some overtime for special enforcement along Main Street Road, which was very successful. We still do have some grant money for the extra patrol. That's typically for our, our safety issues. And one of those is driving while in the influence. I will say that we have one of those projects coming up in this next two-week period. So you will see us out there a little more often because typically that area has a high volume for those drivers driving in here. The gravel trucks, that timeframe, I, I understand that traffic volume is high during that area, during that time. That might contribute to the hours of the quarry. I believe the quarry opens at seven. So typically we will see a lot of that truck traffic that are staged prior to getting loaded for those projects, those construction projects. I don't know what was going on at that time, so I can't comment on that. But historically at our quarries, we do see the, the heavy volume of traffic during certain periods of the day. What I can do is I will have some, some deputies do some extra patrol to kind of get a, a speed count in that area. But what I would like, I'd at least, at least like to have thirty days to get a good base of data that we can collect. And, and that way we can have, with this short week coming up with Thanksgiving, obviously that alters traffic patterns. So I would like to at least have a good thirty days to, to collect some data in that area. I kind of looked a little bit, I, I could look at some of the crash data in that area. I do know that intersection is, is a, is a very bad intersection. When it comes to animals and deer, I know the section between two twentieth street and Main Street Road. That is a high volume where there's car gear accidents. And I think some of that may be contributed to the topographical areas. And then obviously with higher speeds, we have the higher chance of striking those animals. So that's a little bit of concern that, that we may have to take into account with that. But we'll definitely pay some extra attention in that area, get some good data.
One item I want to interject too, is that stop sign coming from the Grand Norris. I would guess ninety percent, ninety percent of the vehicles slow down and keep rolling. Cause I work out in the yard a lot and stuff and you just can't even imagine. How many trucks, semis, the Anhygris guys right now, you just hear them downshift and they just go around the corner. Somebody pops over that hill, which all of us do. Oh, you're going, that truck runs that stop sign. You can't get those back rules to clear that center line before you get there and you're off to the right in the ditch. Or slam the brakes or something. And that's been a problem for decades and I, I've observed it for decades. Though I, I don't know what kind of a thing can be done there, but coming from the south, very few people stop. Cars, trucks, pickups, pick 'em, motorcycles.
Okay. Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Is it possible, is it, is it time for a stop sign there on the east-west road there coming off of East Main?
That would be Paul. I think that would be an engineering decision.
Stop signs on the uphill, it's, it's double-edged. I mean, if there, is there still an upgrade there right when they're at Zeller coming off of East Main? And the, for me, the problem with the stop sign, and you might agree, the. When people pull up northbound to that stop sign, they always have a perception that a vehicle coming off a rock has to stop. Even though there's no stop sign there. And I think there has been accidents where people will stop and, and pull out in front of somebody that's, that's westbound. Because they just assume that the rock traffic is going to stop before it comes. And it, and it's not that way there. So the stop sign, if you did it there, you'd have to do it on, I don't, I have to have opposing stop signs. I don't like the, I don't want to do a three-way there. So.
I think coming from the west is probably the most dangerous part of that stop sign situation. Because you come over that crown of that hill, you don't have a lot of room. You come over that hill, you better be looking to the south just to make darn sure that somebody's not just rolling the stop sign. Which seems to be standard all over the US of A anymore. But anyhow. That, something, there needs to be some consideration that I feel about that particular situation of how much. Traffic rolls through that stop sign coming from the south, turning west.
Okay. Anything else? I think we've had some good discussion and.
Well, I too want to thank you all for listening to our concerns. And I want to reiterate our concerns are legitimate. We're just not sitting out here in the country and listening to ourselves chatter. And so any consideration you can give to our little area for anything we brought up today, we would greatly appreciate. So thank you so much and everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
You betcha. Can, can we come out and maybe remove some of the deer for you?
Please, please do. I, I can just set on my front porch and just shoot all over you want, as long as you can get the DNR to set in the other drive and just count them for you.
Okay. Thank you and you guys have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we also had a gentleman that wanted to talk about Abbott Avenue, north of Chapel Hill Church. I believe it was Mr. Lamer. Do we have him on the line that?
It's Robert Marhary that's on. I don't know if he's.
That's a TR.
That's a TR guy. Okay, yeah. I don't know that we have anyone that didn't speak to the road issue.
Okay.
To the previous one.
Well, this was a gentleman that wanted to talk about the Chapel Hill Church.
Oh, okay.
And I haven't been in contact with anybody, but I haven't heard from anybody on that stretch. Talking county life and Garland Road up to the church.
He, he had contacted supervisor. He had contacted Supervisor Patton.
There's about what, three miles, two, I think, two.
Okay. Well, if he's not here, we're not going to have that discussion or comment. We're going to move on to item number 12 on our agenda this morning. This is an annual official notice to any agencies that are considering requesting counting funding for the fiscal year 2022 to 2023. The Board of Supervisors requires that all funding requests are submitted to the Board of Supervisors by December 8, 2021 at 4:30 PM. Applications must be accompanied by documentation to substantiate the request. You may provide documentation on your own or you may request a budget package from the County Auditor and Recorder's Office. Moving on to our next agenda item this morning is public forum. This is a time set aside for the public to make comments on topics of county business other than those listed on this agenda. No action will be taken on any of these topics brought up in public forum. Anybody for the?
This is Leon. He wants to talk.
Okay.
Leon, I'm going to put you over on my my cell phone by the by the the.
We're going to back up here. Mr. Lamer has gotten through by phone. We're going to go back to item number 11 on our agenda and this is Mr. Leon Lamer wanting to talk about Abbott Avenue north of 160th Street to Chapel Hill Church. Leon, could you go ahead, please? Leon?
It comes through my hearing aids, that's why.
Okay.
I was going to walk out.
One of our key issues was a number of our members were voting no not to rebuild because of the gravel road. We would like, knowing that you're going to get some cash from Uncle Sam one of these days on on their great infrastructure stuff. Bill and I had a conversation that you're going to do one time projects, which I think is a great idea. You guys are you guys are right on top of it. I'd like you to consider those two miles from the Garland Blacktop north to to what our site where the church belongs. We would appreciate it if you would put us on your list and rate us when you're rating your projects. I understand that you probably got 100 projects that you that want to be on that list, but I would appreciate that if I could, if you would just consider us on 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 one of those.
Okay, Leon, before we go too much farther, I'd like Auditor Benson to comment on what some of these federal funds can and cannot be used for, both the ARA funding and possibly also the proposed funding from the federal government that President Biden is talking about. I think Paul can cover that. I'm going to put Nan on first. Dan?
Okay, the ARP funds, the only way that we can utilize those funds for roads is if we can demonstrate lost revenue. We were not able to this first year and in conversations with Beth Miller, our external auditor, she doesn't see that that's going to be an option for those funds at all. She said it's going to be really hard for counties to ever demonstrate that just because of we pretty well stayed open for business and kept going and we just weren't impacted as others were. So she's highly doubtful that we will ever have a calculation where we can show lost revenue, but we will continue to try and see if we're able to use some of those funds for that down the road. So for now, what I'm going to say is that ARP funds will not be available for roads and bridges. Now, I know there's some more infrastructure money that just got signed over and I don't know if Paul's seen anything on that yet. I have not. I've not gotten.
Are you talking about that IIJ thing that?
Yes.
That's our that's our federal reauthorization for just the way we would normally get.
Okay, there's a new thing they just signed though.
Well, there's there's more money in there than what we had in previous federal authorizations.
Okay.
And there's a couple of little sections of it that are, there's one that's the Bridge Investment Program where it's sort of a grant based, you know. Anyway, there's there's more money there than what that we were used to see in a federal authorization. So that's good. It doesn't help us with our local roads and this road would also be pure local, not farm to market. So the the couple of problems are is we're limited to local funding and based on the traffic data that our previous party shared with me, there's the first mile of those two is 70 vehicles a day and the second one is only showing 30. So there's no real way I can make paving points with the DOT as far as getting it to where you can, so we can still pave it, but it would take public hearing and we would have to say this is why we're doing this, even though we don't have the traffic.
Leon, were you able to hear all that?
Oh, he's off speaker. Okay, Leon, can you hear us now?
Yes, now I can hear somebody.
Okay, yeah, the speaker got taken off. I'll give you a brief summary first on the ARP funds. We do have to show lost revenue here at the county for us to be able to utilize that for roads and bridges. So at this point, we did not have lost revenue in our first year and our external auditor, Beth Miller, does not anticipate it, that we will have it in future years either. We will continue the calculation, obviously, just to make sure, but at this point, I don't think roads and bridges are going to be an option for that ARP funding. Now, the I'm going to let Paul speak to the other funding, which is his normal federal funding.
Well, I can just kind of what I what I said was the traffic ends up being an issue for us as far as paving because that first mile has what we see is 70 vehicles a day and the second, the second mile to the north is only 30 vehicles per day. So we have to have hearings to be paving on that. And the other problem is that it's local, local funding only because it's not a farm to market road. So we would have to use just local budget for paving.
Does that answer kind of those two different funding sources, Leon?
I'm talking about the one that the president just signed. Did I just got a?
Are you talking about the one he signed last Tuesday or Monday?
But anyway, thank you for listening to me. I have one other question. Where do I go? Where do I go for or who do I talk to about sanitary sewer?
Todd.
Todd Appel.
That would be Todd Todd Appel.
In our zoning.
He's in our zoning department. Would you like me to send you his phone number?
Leon, I'll text him his number.
Phil's phone's doing something weird, so.
Just shut it down.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's get, we need another supervisor.
We're going to bounce back here and and I've had two of my fellow supervisors take a brief moment out of the room, so we're going to take a temporary adjournment until they return. And then we're going to go to public forum. Okay, we're going to move on to public forum. This is a time set aside for the public to make comments on topics of county business other than those listed on this agenda. No action will be taken on any of these topics brought up in public forum. I know we've got some people online.
I think.
Okay.
So.
Go ahead.
I just want to say you guys are doing a great job with this, all the comments and questions today and allowing everybody to speak their mind. That is a really great. I I had, since we're talking about a bunch of road stuff today, I got another question on roads. Social media, someone posted a statistic, 117 structurally deficient bridges in Marshall County. And there was a lot of concern about that and I was wondering if maybe somebody could address address this issue and what we're doing to fix it.
I think we'll turn that over to our county engineer, Paul Guilenfeld.
I probably better go over there again.
Yeah, come closer.
We're going to get him closer to the.
Or here, come right here.
For just a moment, please.
Is there breakfast pizza?
Yeah, that's happening.
Yeah. Yeah, we got on the news with the structurally deficient bridges. It's not a, it's not a new problem and it's not just a Marshall County problem. It's a problem of 120 years of of building bridges and we built a lot of our bridges very, you know, quickly at the beginning. We were, we were trying to get everybody out of the mud, trying to get out, get our road system together. And so the first, well, I and looking at our bridge inventory, we've got 43 bridges that are over 100 years old. And and those bridges we still have to use and we're trying to keep the system open and keep it viable. We have 59 bridges that are in the range of 70 to 100 years old. So that, you know, if you look at a lot of bridges, lives are that 60 to 70, you know, concrete bridge, I like to say that's 100 year structure. And we have quite a few that are 100 years old that are still in service. We we are continually replacing bridges as well. When you want to talk age, there's 43 bridges in Marshall County that are under 20 years old. So we didn't stop building bridges. It's just we're not, we're not building bridges at the same pace that they were built at the beginning of our system and we are using a higher standard of materials and specifications right now than what they used 100 years ago. So the bridges that we're building will will likely last longer than their intended service life. We have a lot of bridges in Marshall County that are timber, timber piling, steel, steel beams on timber piling and timber is variable and timber doesn't live as long as concrete, especially in the environment where it's wet, dry, wet and dry, the even even creosote treated timber. A timber bridge that is 50 years old is a really old bridge. And and in in effort to get the bridge system put together, a lot of the bridges were built that that was the the common, you know, method of the time was the timber, you know, timber piling, steel beams, and then a timber deck or concrete deck. And and those structures are are becoming more and more deficient every day. And so in our number of 117, I can tell you next year, the number comes out, it's actually the same because we've replaced some bridges, but we also had several more bridges come onto the list of structurally deficient. So even though from 2020 to 2021 report, we went from 117 to 117, we still built five bridges. And it's it's, so I can't say we're going to make huge progress fast on this. A lot of the problem with Iowa and their the structurally deficient bridges has to do with the the size of our system. Even, well, it was a couple directors ago at the DOT, Paul Trombino was a the director of the DOT that's from, he's from Wisconsin. And him outside looking into the Iowa system, he's like, yeah, the counties are going to have funding problems. They've got too many roads. They don't need the miles that they have, you know, and he, and that was his strategy was vacate. Well, we can't vacate roads because we don't have unified land ownership. So there's no way without land locking people and making, you know, the people can't get to their property that we couldn't, that that's really even an option. So it was just, but it was just the opinion of someone from outside of Iowa saying it's each county has 1,000 miles of road, you know, and it just, as far as compared to other states, we have a large county road system. So I.
Sorry to interrupt.
Very, very many. I mean, the the bridges that were built 100 years ago, a lot of those bridges would have been built with cement that they brought in, but the rocks and the sand that just happened to be in the in the riverbed right there, they would dig and make concrete just on the materials that were right there. And that's not something we could even think about doing right now. I mean, it's.
Oh, the other people talking about, that were talking about their concerns with their road, they mentioned box culverts. Is that, that's an option for replacing bridges?
We we do replace box bridges with box culverts whenever it's whenever it's feasible. I I will do twin boxes. I don't really like to do triples because it never fails when we put a triple box in for a bridge, two of the boxes fill up with silt and one box main remains open and it doesn't, it still works, but it doesn't efficiently use the hydraulic opening of the of the structure. But box culverts are something that we we even do with our with our own crews. We'll, we'll take out a small bridge and if it's, you know, look at the hydraulics and make sure that it's going to work, but if we can put a box culvert or sometimes even a large metal culvert will will take the place of a bridge. And those options are available now when those culvert sizes weren't even built, you know, there wasn't precast box culverts that were 10 feet, you know, 80 years ago. They they didn't do that kind of thing. But and the and the metal pipes are bigger than they have been, were historically than, you know, 50 years ago, they didn't have the large, the eight, nine, 10 foot metal pipe that that you can get nowadays. So there's, there's ways we can, we can replace structures that that aren't bridges. But it's along those same lines. We have the 117 structurally deficient bridges. We have quite a few structures that are structurally deficient that aren't 20 feet. They're not on that list. So we replace a structurally deficient bridge that's 18 feet long. It doesn't change our count. It's, but along those same lines, we still have to replace that bridge because it's still important for getting grain and families to school, work in school and all the other, you know, purposes of the system.
Mark, one of the reasons we made the decision several years ago to buy larger equipment for the engineer was the fact that with his own staff, we can replace these bridges with box culverts. And what that eliminates is us going to the state of Iowa and putting the bridges out for bid. It's allowed us to be much more aggressive on our replacement and get more things done with our own personnel. The only thing we can't do is the actual physical setting of the box culvert itself because we don't have a crane that has lifting capacity to do it. But other than that, we do the entire replacement with our own personnel at a much more cost effective thing. The other thing you run into is there's only so many contractors within the state of Iowa that can do bids and it has to go out to these contractors and be engineered and approved by the state. And that really slows things up for us and that's one of the reasons we got much more aggressive at doing things on our own with the box culverts. Paul, would you give us a heads up on what the state does as far as why there's a bottleneck?
Well, we, we got a grant, it was a year ago, that was the competitive highway bridge grant that we got from the feds and we were able to bundle a bunch of bridge projects and they did, oh, there was $30 million. Just like I said, we did, we we had got a large influx of grant money and we had to bundle bridge projects, county to county, county to city, different places where they could could bundle these projects. They let them all and they got to the place where at the end of this grant, that there were projects that were good viable projects that got zero bids because there were no contractors left that wanted to take any more work on that work season. And so we really found out that even if we get this limitless funding, let's just say they said, no, we'll spend as much as you want. We only have so many contractors in the state of Iowa that will bid work and they can only build so many bridges in a construction season. And we found out where that spot was because there were counties in the in the bundle that had to relet their project just to get a bid. And they had to let it with a relaxed, with relaxed working days so that they could actually put it in the next construction season.
Paul, I've got a question about. Well, I've got a question about the word deficient. Uh, and, and it sounds terrible, but uh, wha- what are the specs and things that, with it, they use when they say deficient? Does that mean it can't be used, period? Or what?
Structural, structural deficiency and actually, the FHWA doesn't even use structurally deficient anymore. They don't call it, they don't have a list of SD bridges. They have a list of poor bridges. The.
How'd we get on the list then of deficient bridges? Is, is, is that?
Years ago, they did, but I'm just saying the FHWA stopped using the word structurally deficient, I think three years ago.
Okay.
But they, it, it means that one of the major structural components of the bridge, either the superstructure, the substructure, or the deck rates four or less. And four on our scale of zero or one to nine is a, is a four. And so once you get a bridge that has a component, that's a structural component that rates four, then that would be in our structurally deficient uh, category. We've got bridges that are not structurally deficient, that are still weight-restricted just because of the, of what they were built to. We've got bridges in the county that were, when they were built, there wasn't even cars on the road. You know, so they're building to just get across this, this waterway. And, and so we all know that the loadings have increased over the decades and they, they continue to. But, but that's, when you talk about priorities, what drives my selection of, of, of which bridge to replace isn't necessarily just pick all the SD bridges. I'm picking the ones, first of all, that are weight restrictions that are on our pave system. If we're gonna have a 20-ton posted bridge on a pavement, that has all my priority just, just instantly because it, it's, it impacts grain hauling and impacts, you know, all, all modes of commerce. And, and then I will also look at places where we've got weight-restricted bridges that are on our farm-to-market system and on our federal aid system that are on, on rock. We've had places where we have to weight-restrict a bridge to the place where a school bus can't use that. Then I've gotta talk to the schools. Is there, is there another route to get to this, to get to these students here if we, if we take this bridge down to, down to 10 tons? So it's, the, the, the priority for me is keeping the system viable, but we also have to use a lot of these structurally deficient bridges for, for quite a while yet because we've gotta get a little more life out of them as we replace the bridges that are just out of life.
So it's a more complicated problem than just saying, hey, let's throw money at it?
Yeah, yeah, I, I could talk about it a lot longer than anybody at this table wants to listen to it.
I appreciate you answering my questions. And so, so you're, so you're making sure that they're safe to travel by load rating on your, you know, you're, you're on top of it. You can only do so many, you know, at a time because of, you know, not just funding, but resources. So.
And I'm, I'm looking at places where I've got, I've got sections of property where I can't get a certain size load to or can't get a load out of. And I've had to, I've had to replace bridges where it's the only way that two people get to their house.
Yeah.
That's a pretty important bridge. Now, on the grand scheme of things, not too many people are gonna care, but those two people, that's the only way they get home.
All right, I appreciate it. I know it's a long meeting and I, and I, and, but it seems like it was a pertinent question for the whole topic today. So, thank you.
Can we get, get your answers, cover your questions and answers?
I think so. It's just a big problem and everybody, you know, you guys are on it and everybody should stay calm. Carry on.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
You betcha. Have a nice Thanksgiving. Anything else under public comment?
No. Everyone's looking at me. I don't think I have anything today.
That's rare.
I know it is.
Okay. Um, moving on, we're gonna go to item number 14 on our agenda today. We are going to go into closed session per Iowa code 21.5 subsection 1 subsection A to review or discuss records which are required or authorized by the state or federal law to be kept confidential. So let the record show that we are going into closed session at 10:40 AM.
We need a motion in a second.
I'll need a motion in a second to do that, please.
I would make a motion on illegal in closed section.
10:41?
10:41.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second to go into closed session at 10:41. Any further discussion? There being none, roll call vote, please.
This is to review or discuss records which are required or authorized by the state or federal law to keep confidential.
Yes.
Uh, Marshall County has an attorney-client relationship with the office of the Marshall County Attorney Mayor's in Kenny, DC. Roll call Thompson.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Losick.
Yes. Okay. James, would you please?